I forever friend was a high school.
All right.
Arts chairman. Cheers up here. Dale Johnson.
Yeah.
Yep.
Glad you're here.
United States of America and to be repented for which stands. One nation.
I'm ready to find.
It's all. Justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. The technicality difficulties were seven minutes late. But we're here. Call the meeting to order. Prove the agenda. Any corrections?
I'll make a motion to freeze the charges.
I'll second.
All favor.
Aye.
Hold. Eric. Prove the minutes of November fourth. But you're all correct, motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All. Through. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Prove the claims.
Uh, looking through, I had, uh, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight four five point seven eight. I didn't make that motion.
That's why I saw, saw second.
Three nine eight four five seven eight.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I seen him there. Well, checks to all the people who work pools and thank them for.
Yes.
Doing what they did. It's a lot of commitment from the community to do that. Appreciate their service.
A long day, but they enjoy it, I think so. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold. Eric. General public concerns, anybody here wants to talk? If not, moving on. Ben, you're up.
Morning.
You're looking good this morning, but you don't have it done that way ever.
Yes, you do, from now on, every meeting you come.
I'm gonna have to buy some more suits.
Maybe it's be a lung dress.
Uh, I have two items on the. Agenda. Uh, two applications to work in the county right away. Both of them are in the same vicinity. Um. For Midland Power, they're looking at converting some of their overhead electrical lines. On two hundredth street, geez. Uh, to underground. Um. Believe it was last week, we approved crossings at a hundred and ninetieth and two hundred and tenth street. This is for up on two hundred, um. Everything's in order, their paperwork's fine. I don't see an issue with any of this. Uh, it, it's, it's underground next to. Can't think of the. Resident that lives out there right now, off the top of my head. No, it's out by the substation, um.
Are they, when they're boring, are they just going underneath the road or?
Yes, there, there is one stretch that they'll be in the back of the right away on two hundred street for, for about two hundred feet. From where the overhead line runs north and south, they'll go east and then come under the highway to the, um. Substation.
Okay, so you don't see any issue with any of that?
I do not.
So that is a separate deal right there?
Yes, there's two separate permits.
Okay. Well, that one, I would make a motion to approve for. The boring underground and this is a two hundred speed area.
Yes.
Yes. Permit in power.
I have a second.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Hold. Eric.
Like I said, they did this in two separate permits instead of one. Uh, the first one was just to run north, south. Underneath the gravel road. The second one is to. Run along the back of the right away on the south side for approximately two hundred feet before crossing the road to get to the substation.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the second working right away permit from your compliance.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold. Eric.
The. Last item that we have is to amend resolution. Twenty twenty-four dash oh one oh seven, is that right?
So it's one oh, one dash seven.
One dash seven. Uh, this is the resolution that was passed in January. To place a moratorium on Humboldt County. For any future development while we were working on our comprehensive plan and subsequent zoning ordinance. Uh. We felt that we would be further along in the process than where we're at right now. But we're told that the. Comprehensive plan, we should have the first draft in our hand by the beginning of, I believe, the beginning of next month.
Yeah, so they claim.
So. Uh. The proposal is to. Strike the language out of the original resolution that said that at sunset. Either at a year. Or upon completion of the comprehensive plan. In ordinance, strike anywhere out that references the year. And it'll just sunset when we've completed the comprehensive plan and.
And we're voting, right?
And, and it's up to the ordinance.
I thought I had got more than one here.
Other than that, nothing's changing on the language, the language intact.
All restriction is for a period of one year and.
Right.
And leave until the county of comprehensive plan is only noted to be approved.
Yes.
And if I remember right, John had looked at this in place and. This was fine. With John looking at it and saying that it looks good and we just need to amend this, I will. Make a motion to. For the resolution twenty twenty-four dash one dash oh seven amended resolution for moratorium.
Second Sandy's motion.
Any other discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye. Aye, Rick.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Just one.
The. The letters.
Yeah.
Yeah. Those are happiest for the board to review. Trying to keep you guys up to speed.
Yep.
Beyond that, uh, we've got our two track excavators south of Thor. Digging up the tile that are running underneath the roadway so that starting the beginning of next week. Subsurface can come in and put those culvert liners in. Uh, their plan is to move in with their equipment Monday. They anticipate two days to do everything, so.
Okay. Nobody have flag men out there knocking everybody.
Yes, we'll have, we'll have, uh, traffic controls being completed by the county.
Okay.
We have, uh, also have bridge inspections starting on Thursday. So Thursday and Friday, you'll see. Chuck Britson going around doing their. Bridge inspections on the seventy, roughly seventy-three bridges that we've got remaining in the county.
Almost good.
Well, the bridge inspection's only gonna be so, maybe other year on some and there you want some?
Every year on our high trusses and the pony trust. And every other year on the.
Any of them?
The remaining ones, so.
We don't know their. Full prep for Twitter. Follow.
The mowers that are operable are running right now. We still have one sitting at Nielsen's to be repaired. The other two are running. Uh, with the moisture that we had, all of our blades were out yesterday. Running our gravels, trying to cut up what we had for washboards. We are blading through dust controls because it is. Basically the middle of November.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Send letters out, uh, property owners that are. Getting creative with. Their drainage right now. Keep them busy.
Planning zone job description for me?
I need to work on it. I need to sit down and work on it, so.
You need help with me?
Okay. I've got the descriptions, I just haven't sat down to. Flush out a. Description and, uh.
Yes.
Position to advertise.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
We have enough, uh, calcium and all of the stuff that we need. Sorry. Then wipe the stuff if it shows up and. You got enough edges, blades and.
Uh, I'm gonna get quotes on blades. We're gonna get a price to see what it would cost to run with carbides. On our maintainers since we've been doing a lot of. Scraping on the white tops in front of our plow trucks to try and peel ice off. We're gonna look and see what. Couple sets of those would cost us.
Will we get double the wear or what's the advantage?
So what we've seen from our dump trucks is we've gotten quite a bit more wear. Um. I asked the guys to keep track of how many rounds they were making on those carbide inserts with their dump trucks versus the others. And it was. Twenty times as many, so. Uh, decrease in the cost of labor for the guys. Swapping the, the blades out as well as. Uh, increased efficiency for the guys, so less downtime. Um, we had good results with the carbides on the dump trucks. Looking at possibly the same thing for the maintainers. They would switch back to their regular blades in summertime for those operations, but for the wintertime, they would run with the carbides.
You have any in your hand right now, carbide blades?
Uh, not for the maintainers, no.
Dump trucks.
Just for the dump trucks.
They're gonna run those on all the trucks?
Yeah, all of the trucks are fitted with carbide blades now.
Well, you said they're twenty times, they don't cost twenty times as much, so.
Uh, yeah, I don't remember the exact amount on how much more they were. But it wasn't twenty times as much.
I mean, that.
Yeah.
Easy math, if they're twice as much, it's still worth it.
Yeah.
Would you say?
I would say so.
Okay.
Well, if we get the spring tomorrow, that's enough to win it for me.
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm going.
Don't you need some over?
Go back to sixty on Saturday, I think is what they said, almost sixty.
Wow.
I think our goal is to, uh. Mix sand the week of Thanksgiving if the weather is fit, so. We need about a dozen loads up and bode and a half a dozen or so loads and. Party and then. Say probably at least ten loads in Humboldt, so.
We don't need to get hit like Colorado did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Being out there.
They know.
They're down to Mexico and Oklahoma.
Yeah, they're down, yes.
All right, okay, anything else for Ben?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dale Johnson.
Okay, moving on down, prove class C liquor license for outdoor service for River Valley Orchard and Wyner.
This is our annual. Um, renewal. Everything is in order, as you show with them.
No questions, concerns?
No, they do.
Maybe. Well, if this looks good, I would make a motion to approve the class secret license. Outdoor service for River Valley Orchard and Wyner.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold. Eric. You need to be here in our, please renew cancellation family farm credits.
We didn't know she pressured up coffee.
You didn't know that was a service?
I didn't know that we could, is that that spouser?
Yeah, great.
Jeez. From Jersey.
Maybe Dean will run in with the dog.
Well, it looks better than. I made copies for you for the new ones. And I didn't sort of got cancellation, don't ask me why, I was just, you know, messed up there. So you can pass them around. Yeah, and the new ones, we had a hundred and fifteen maybe.
It's the same.
Yeah, yeah, those are all the same shirt.
These are for the new and canceled family farming credits.
Correct.
For cancellation.
Are these, are these new or canceled?
Uh, the one with the yellow on it is new.
Okay.
It, there should be, what one do you have there? What is it? Oh, here it is. This is the cancellation.
That's supposed to cancellation.
Yeah.
These are all new or just?
Yeah.
These are all, all new. What's a yellow, do you know?
Well, we had. They signed up under one name. And then it changed ownership, so it's been.
Still qualified, just a different name.
Nope, it has to be canceled.
Oh.
So.
So this is a cancellation on this one, then?
Yeah, it, it was a new one.
Oh, it was new, but it's.
Just allow.
Yeah.
Just allow.
Yeah. They'll have to come in and.
Those are retired.
If they qualify, have to come in and restart.
What they're doing is, is, uh, like they. Move a little dirt and drain the pond into the ditch.
Um.
It's all surface water.
So if they don't fix it, then we will fix it and charge them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Okay.
And here's the actual. I have to give those to you.
Every year you send. All good, so they got water.
Um. Let me know when my condition.
Some of the cancellations might be, but.
So you.
Oh, that will make you copy. You want a copy of those?
I don't.
No.
Not really, if we pause, we'll send them to you.
Okay. That'd be good.
I'm talking myself in the corner anyways.
I know.
It's worse for me.
Whatever, it's the same every year. It's no. Half the counties only, probably third of the counties, probably the general.
Yeah. And I'd be glad to see copies of that.
And these are the canceled.
Right.
And we need to engage if you want.
They don't do. Linda, why don't you answer? What's in some of your?
Oh. Usually probably.
Change.
Ownership. Or maybe somebody else who. Maybe they're cash running now or.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Change of policy.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Not actively farming.
Hey. Any questions?
No. They already done motion then to approve. New and canceled bandy farm credits.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold. Eric.
And if we did one in error.
It can be corrected.
Yep. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's jump down to committee reports and then we'll go into candidates.
Eric. All right, let me take a look here. So this was just yesterday, Tuesday the twelfth. We have a, uh, Public Safety Commission meeting yesterday morning. Didn't have anything last week.
Okay, um. Friday, last Friday, I met with, um. Alyssa and Cole in the city and we talked about Midas, was they really our past Midas. Representatives and. Visited about, um, possible replacements. I don't know if anybody's called anybody yet. But, um.
That was Tuesday, wasn't it the fifth?
Is that Tuesday?
It was Tuesday.
Oh, I have a wrong date now.
Okay.
Two, I don't know, I thought it was thirty. And then I had public safety on Tuesday morning. That's it.
I had nothing much week.
Hey, um, Tuesday the fifth, I was with Rick on that Midas, talking with Alyssa and Cole. And then, um, last night I was at the. Uh, S I A C meeting for Humboldt Schools. It was interesting. I'd never done that before. They asked me to come, but it's basically, you go over their. Safety and their food policies, wellness policies, just kind of what. They had teachers there, they had community people, they had retired teachers, they have all their administration, they just went over what they did and. But, and then they had a student at every table and that was good too, what they did then. S I A C, S I A C, Humboldt Schools, yeah, what's its team? Never mind.
Trump. That must be, you know.
Safety innovation, maybe I think something like that. I, I can, wow. Yeah, it's something they have to do. It's for their funding and things like that. They have to have a community.
Oh, meeting.
Meeting. With that and, um. Thought I had it right here. But he explained it. Jim did a good job, explained why we had to do it and. I don't know where it went. I've got, if, if you need to know exactly what it is, I'll. Okay. I'll find it later. I might know.
All you can?
Sorry, yes, that's all I have.
I had nothing official. Busy, but not much. Okay. Let's go back and go into canvases of Board of Canvassers.
I'll make a motion when we recess, this board is supervising.
All second.
All right.
Not willingly, but all second.
Get in a minute, by golly, Bruce.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
We are in our.
Certainly going to Dennis.
Board of.
You know, I don't even know. Hey, Trish, I just found it. It's School Improvement Advisory Committee.
Ah.
There you go.
I knew as soon as I said.
You said yourself. I would. Take a while, get big work in here.
Okay.
Well, yeah, he's. He's a cross between his mother and father.
Oh, yeah, they're big.
He's.
Go ahead.
I don't know.
It's up to you.
I know.
The most parties. Me.
Wow.
Recession to get everything organized.
Aye.
Right. Can somebody have those canceled and shield about?
Yeah.
We're getting well, starting Christmas.
Well, he's, he hasn't been on the case in years. Several years.
They.
Are you?
I won't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. There you go.
Well, I don't remember. Who can drive? I guess, I forgot about that.
I said, I don't, I wouldn't admit there, then it's all, I knew I had a thing. I'm gonna say the thing going through and you get to like. I don't wanna be. I don't wanna be late, I don't wanna be right in the middle of it.
Can't tell that it's forty-two.
I mean, I want right now, but.
It's been a lot of years.
Chris, well, this guy's saying like half.
It's open in eighty-four, why shake an hour, would she say?
Christmas of eighty-one.
I remember two years ago.
Yeah, with the same.
And, uh.
We met like in an afternoon, it's always.
Yeah, we had to do it on Tuesday after.
Yeah, if you remember that.
After the election.
Probably five, five years.
That's what I was still taking care of a little art there and, uh.
That screwed up everybody's schedule.
No, they, first thing in with first year was just sad on signing and all cares. And it happened right. Four foot tall. That was one way or another, shame right inside the door, not.
Okay. Oh, yeah, and that's probably not a good.
And I got about a, uh, n- five only over a half.
Trying to go down that way.
You're right.
It'll be one.
Uh, hopefully not too long.
Yeah.
No, I have.
Must the board mad, he didn't even show up.
I know it, man.
No.
Well, I could be wrong, but I would go. From what I will. Oh.
They're so excited.
Pretty cool.
Yeah.
I promised to read one.
I got, I got zapped.
Sit outside the door.
Oh, that's what that is?
You guys.
Okay.
I have every confidence and faith that everyone. We got through it last time when I was zero.
Yeah.
Like two or three others. But then the little round face characters, they was under others downtown, so they donated.
Yeah, bring a board this today.
You're bored, you're not.
I'm old.
You're just feeling old.
What's election?
I think it was election, election beat us up.
Bruce.
Yeah. Was kind of brutal, honestly.
My truck? Oh. Oh, I got. The new excavator next week, I gotta go down and get shocked again, cause I'm out of rhythm. Well, it's, they, they were thinking that possibly that could be started, so.
What?
Well, when your heart isn't pumping, then it doesn't. I saw in the song. Yeah, yeah. Well, I have this strange thing where I can take my phone and then I. Press the button on my.
I know I was there.
And it, uh. Records. Put my fingers on it and then does that.
There's the first person.
Thirty seconds and then it will say, you are a fib. They're jockeying one more time, no, they're gonna shock me. A week from two yesterday.
Oh, no.
And then last time. Last three years. And then, if, if I go back out of rhythm. Then the next time, I gotta go down, have the, love my groin and have the. Bottom side of my heart, just whatever. My brother-in-law over in Elfer Farms and she's a year size and they raise hogs and he's active. He had, uh, kept jumping out.
Eighty one, I do that first one.
Yeah, that was the first year.
He's had no issues and he said, how did this even happen?
Well, the part. The lady, the last time I was down and she says, just her, so you know, no one's ever died.
Which he wasn't, which you know what?
I think I'm good. I don't have time to do that.
Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah.
All right, you got everything?
If you get one, you gotta read it.
They said Rick's not here. I said, I'm, Rick is here.
Be easier to flip. Okay, so when we go through them, we'll just go by precinct, like precinct one will be. All of these and then precinct one, again, we'll start with these. We'll go by precinct instead of candidate.
Oh.
And. Let me get those handy dandy tapes. We will have to run through those. Oh, those are fun.
I have a hard enough time keeping my grocery receipt to take home to show my wife so she can scan it whatever she.
I do that. I'll, I'll go to Menards with the list. I'll get partway through my job and I'll, where the hell's my list? I set it somewhere in the store, so I gotta go back after I find my list. There it is, it's laying there.
Well, who wants, who wants precinct one?
I'll do it. I don't care.
Um, who wants to be the bookmarker checker out or?
The bookmarker checker out? Oh, I'll do the book in this thing and use.
Yeah.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, there's one for Bruce. Two, three, four for Bruce. Five and six.
I just gotta go along here. You're gonna say it and then I'm just gonna check it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure.
This one feels a little thin, but that's okay. I ain't gonna explain.
We'll get started.
Now with these. Tells you the over votes and under votes plus their totals. So you'll want to read the overs and unders.
Over, under.
Is that?
All right, I get it. I get it.
Okay, so.
We will go and where does Bruce this.
Okay.
So. I'm just gonna start with number precinct one.
Yeah.
And I start with Donald Trump and Vance.
Yeah.
And I give those numbers.
Yes.
Then I go to Harris and then there's some other people.
Yes.
We have to read them too.
Yeah.
Where did these people come in at? I didn't know they were even.
I know.
Shut up.
Some of them I didn't even.
All right, precinct number one. We have Trump and Vance. I have four hundred and eighty. Harris and Walts, I got one thirty eight. Oliver, um, Bree. Do I have to read the zeros?
No.
Okay. Um, is it Shannon? Nine? Shanahan?
Robert Kennedy and Shanahan.
It's what?
Robert F. Kennedy.
Okay, I didn't know he was with that. I thought he would.
He, he pulled out, but his name was on the, a lot of ballots.
Yeah, they left him on.
Yeah.
Then I got write-ins four. I got the under is two and the over is zero. Then we go to Beanstra, the representative district four. Is that? Part of precinct one then?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, I got Feenster with four, eight, eight. Milton with one twenty six. Under is twenty two, over is zero.
Very good.
I got US Senator District twenty eight. I got Guth.
Okay, twenty, okay, I'm there.
I got Guth with four, seven, three. Uh, Opadoll. And passion. At one, three, five. Write-ins zero, under twenty eight, over zero.
Are we reading the F and F and Bs?
The absentees are a separate one.
I got State Representative fifty six, Thompson, four, seven, nine. Ruth Cruz, one, three, two, writing zero, under twenty five, over zero. Order supervisors, district four. All zeros.
When, so what about the, we have to read Supreme Courts, because my next page is Supreme Court.
Yeah, it jumps on the tape.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Well, for crying.
Well, these guys aren't even in that district, so there's all zeros.
Well, hang on, hang on.
Then go to the auditor.
Okay, okay, I'm here. I got it.
I got it.
Supervisor four, district four. I got it now.
Zero, all zeros.
Cause he's precinct one.
Never mind.
That's why I was saying. I'll shut up before you slap me. District five is zeros for Bob Rasmussen. Now you wanna argue about this?
No, I don't. We're all just a little punch happy right now.
That's why I was saying it's district four that doesn't vote in this.
All right.
All right, now we're gonna go to, uh, auditor. You thought that was gonna be an easy job and here you're flipping back and forth. I got auditor Chris Erickson, five, five, four. Writing six, under seventy six, over zero. Sheriff. I got Kruger, five, six, four. Write-ins fifteen, under fifty seven, over zero. You know, the only thing I don't like about this is we don't get to see who the write-ins are, because those are always.
They're, they're here.
Oh, they are there.
Book of this, I said comic relief.
Daffy Duck and whoever.
No, I haven't seen anything.
I got Avery trustee township. Avery Township, they're all zeros, yep. Beaver is all zeros, so that's number two. Cornet. Would be. In there. That is Doug Bacon for eighty four.
Yeah.
Write-ins four, under is one oh six, over is zero.
I got write-ins one.
I got four.
That's on.
Um, Cornet Township trustee.
That's why we canvassed the horse.
Okay, that's the whole person. Um, I will check on that one.
You want me to put a check on here? Or do not touch it?
I'll write it down here.
Well, there's a total of five write-ins.
That's not good, because that's different from what we got. I got.
There's one on the absentee.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the, my absentee says zero, write-ins. Could that be part of it?
Oh, I know one. Because Cody Allen next to it.
Says two.
And Joe, and then Jared Lane.
Says two.
Yeah, so that.
Those are the write-ins?
That's two, then there's a Jason Edge for one.
I don't have Jason Edge online, but.
So all of those are four.
There's Jason Edge is the one, Cody Allen is one, Jared Lane is two.
Right.
And then there was one on.
Absentee.
Absentee. So really, these two right here, we need to put right in. Above, on the paper, Cody and Jared, do we need to put right in above here?
You can put right in there, I mean. Yeah, because I had to assign a winner, we have to draw between those two.
The two.
Oh, I see they're a tie. Gotcha.
Yes.
So you got it fingered out?
Yep, it is a write-in, but that's who was written in, sorry.
So now I go to Delaina trustee, there's zeros. Delaina trustee, fill a vacancy, zeros. And I have Grove trustees, all zeros. No, yeah, 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 all zeros. Then I have Humboldt trustee, township trustee, zeros. Are you good with them?
Yeah, because, yeah.
Lake, Lake trustees, I got all zeros. I have Lake Township fill a vacancy, all zeros. Norway trustee township, all zeros. Rutland trustee, all zeros. Vernon, all zeros. Acusta, all zeros. Now we go to Weaver. I have Randy Davis with twelve. Write-in zero, under is twelve, over is zero. Humboldt Hospital.
Thank you. Okay, Humboldt Hospital, okay.
I got Sam Ray with four, one, five. Uh, Molly Barunthunk, one, four, five, oh. Natalie Wordland, four, three, two. Write-ins four, under was six oh seven, over is zero. All right, soil conservation. I got Pat Hill, four, seven, four.
Okay, I went one too many. Okay, there you go.
Pat Hill, four, seven, four.
Okay.
TC Loving, three, eight, nine, write-ins three. Uh, under is four oh six, over is zero. Uh, Soil, Water District Conservation Commissioner to fill vacancy. I got Reed Burris, five oh nine, write-ins five, under is one, two, two, over is zero. County Agricultural Extension. I got Jenna Borman, three, nine, nine. Jeffrey Goodell, four, four, one. Jennifer Lash, four, two, nine. Uh, Jill, Jill Son, three, nine, five. Write-ins two, under is eight, seven, four, over is four. We all good?
Yep. So did somebody vote too many times? Cause you only vote so many, so is that why there's four over?
This is choose four and then choose five.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
I figured that was the right case.
I got County Agricultural Extension. There is no district, it is. I got Matthew Dorbner, Dorbner. Four, nine, four.
Darnber, you're darn bear.
Darnbear. Four, nine, four, write-ins two, under is one, four, oh, over is zero. Now we do the huh? Oh, we gotta do all the judges yet?
Okay, we got it.
David May is the top. First one.
Yep.
I got David May, yes, three, eight, five, no, eighty four, under is one, six, seven, over is zero.
Yep.
Appeals Judge Mary Elizabeth, oh my God.
Chicka Chelli.
There you go, just like that.
Yeah.
I got, uh, yes is three, four, five, no is nine, seven. Under is one ninety four, over is zero. Appeals Judge San Samuel Lang Holtz, I crucify these names. Um, yes is three, three, six, no is ninety nine, under two oh one, over is zero. We have, uh. We came, uh, Court of Appeals Judge Mary Ellen Tabor. Yes, three, four, zero, no, ninety six, under two hundred, over zero. Appeals Judge Taylor or Tyler Fuller. I have yes, three, four, three, no, ninety one. Under two oh two, over zero. District two B Judge Derek Johnson, yes, three, five, five. No, eighty seven, under one, nine, four, over four, zero.
Yep.
Uh, Judge two B, um, Airdier? Aiden, Curster? Aiden, Airdier?
Yeah.
Okay, three, three, five, yes, one hundred is no. Uh, under is two oh one and over is zero. To be Kurt Stovey. Four, one, four is yes. No is ninety, under is one, three, two, over is zero. To be Catherine. Austin is yes, three, five, five, no, seventy eight. Under two oh two, over is one. Judge, uh, Hans Becker is three, four, six, yes, no is eighty seven. Under is two oh three, over is zero. Ashley Beecher.
Yes.
Yes, okay, I got yes, three, five, oh, no, eighty three. Under is two oh three, over is zero. Paul Crawford, yes, three, four, six, no, eighty five, under two oh five, over zero. Joseph McCarville, yes, three, seven, four, no is seventy eight. Under is one, eight, four, over is zero. Uh, Hunter Thor. Yes, three, four, three, no, eighty nine. Under is two oh four, over is zero. Constitutional Amendment one, vote for no more than one. There was yes, four, seven, one. No is one, one, zero. Under vote is fifty five, over is zero. Constitution Amendment number two, yes, five, one, seven. No is sixty, under is fifty-nine. That is the end.
Over vote zero.
Over vote is zero.
Yep. I.
I gotta go to a doctor's department. I had to be a smart ass, I'm sure. I'm done, I got the long one.
Oh, that's the long one. Now they're all standard.
Well, this.
Okay.
I should've cleaned my glasses a little better.
Yeah.
They're just a tad bit.
I think I should've brought my coffee then.
We can find some for you.
Let me know when you're ready.
I got a sugar high over here, if you want a cookie to start it off.
When I get down to this, I'll have a cookie. Okay, I got precinct two.
Okay.
Donald Trump, four hundred and thirty-three.
Yep.
Kamala, hundred and forty. Uh, Mike. Oliver, I'll, Chase Oliver, Mike.
No, Chase Oliver and Mike.
Oh, Chase Oliver, too, okay.
I don't know.
Yeah. And Claudia Cruz, zero. Stadton, zero. Kennedy, four. Uh, Silva, whatever that is, yeah, zero. Rittens, seven, uh, you have enough to do the Rittens, or do we?
Yeah.
We're writing it, right, it's Rittens, right, it's seven, under vote two, over vote zero. Representative Randy Feenstra, four hundred and twenty. Milton, a hundred and twenty-nine. Write-ins three, under vote thirty-six, over vote zero. Dennis, uh, Presidente, Dennis Guth, four hundred and eleven. Cynthia Opadoll, a hundred and twenty-six. Write-ins one, under vote fifty, over vote zero. Okay, Representative District Fifty-Six. Mark Thompson, four hundred and eleven. Kyle Cruz, Kraus, a hundred and thirty. Write-ins one, under vote forty-six, over vote zero. County Auditor.
Okay. You should put, um, stickers there.
Yeah, you need some paper clips, clips of that sort, so you just get it easy.
Do you have paper clip?
I got some handy little things, I'll toss you away.
Page twenty-seven.
There you go.
Five, sorry, you have twenty-five? No, one or, one or more, yep, there we go, thank you, for twenty-six. Okay, Auditor.
County Auditor Chris Erickson, four hundred and ninety. Six write-ins, under vote ninety-two, over vote zero. County Sheriff Dean Kruger, five hundred and ten, write-ins eighteen, under vote sixty, over vote zero. Beaver Township Trustee.
Beaver, okay.
Okay, I got a name, Richard Lynn, there's no zero or nothing behind it, what does that mean?
I got fifty-two.
What, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, fifty-two. Yeah, dumb.
Yeah, this one is.
Yeah, 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 gotcha. Dave Torkelson, fifty-two.
Yep.
Under vote sixty-six. Over vote zero.
Zero write-ins.
Zero write-ins, I'm sorry. Forest Township, Doug Bacon, ten, write-in zero, under vote fourteen, over zero. Humboldt County Trustee.
Okay, I got mixed up on my lines here, okay, so did you say I need about fourteen?
Uh, under vote fourteen, under vote zero.
Okay.
Now we're going to Humboldt Trustee. Yeah. Yeah.
The hospital one, hospital, yes.
Yes.
Thirty-three. Of the patient.
County Hospital Trustee.
Okay.
Pam Ray, three hundred and twenty-six. Molly Brancum, three sixty-one. Natalie Wordland, three hundred and fifty-five. Write-ins nine, under vote seven hundred and thirteen, over vote zero. Soil Conservation District. Pat Hill, four, oh, two.
Thank you, okay, four, oh, two, okay.
Four, oh, two. TC Loving, three hundred and fifteen, write-ins eight. Under vote four, fifty-one, over vote zero. Soil, Water Conservation to fill of vacancy. Reed Burris, four hundred and forty-six.
Yep.
Write-ins five, under vote one, thirty-seven, over vote zero. County Agricultural Extension Council. Jenna Borman, three fourteen. Jeff Goodell, three seventy-three. Jennifer Lash, three thirty-four. Jill Son. Three fourteen, write-ins eleven. Under vote one thousand and six. Over vote zero. Okay, County Extension to fill of vacancy. Matthew Doranber, four hundred and twenty-nine, write-in seven. Under vote one fifty-two. Over vote zero. Now it's all the judges.
Judges.
Judges judge.
I got, yeah, but I got my. I didn't have such stress. I need more paper clip.
Gotcha.
Go fish. I get rid of mine right away.
You're gonna get a. Fresh paper for that time.
Okay.
Keep my good old over now.
That was.
Just, it's just a reminder, every time I look in that drawer, I think Jesus.
We were safe, though.
We were, yeah, we were.
We didn't have one person drop over in there.
Uh-uh, no. I gotta remember where I was at now, down here.
David.
Judges. Okay. To retain, retain Supreme Court Justice David May, yes, three, eighteen, no, one, eleven. Under vote one fifty-nine, over vote zero. Appeals Judge Mary Chichelli. Yes, two eighty-nine, no, one twenty-five, under vote one seventy-four, over vote zero. To retain Court of Appeals Judge Samuel Lang Holtz. Yes, two hundred and ninety-one, no, one eighteen. Under vote one seventy-nine, over vote zero. To retain Court of Appeals Judge Mary Ellen Tabor. Yes, two ninety-six, no, one eleven. Under vote one eighty-one, over vote zero. To retain Court Appeals Judge Tyler Moore. Yes, two ninety-seven. No, one oh, five. Under vote one eighty-six, over vote zero. To retain District two-B Court Judge Derek Johnson. Yes, three hundred and twenty-three, no, eighty-nine. Under vote one seventy-six, over vote zero. Retain District two-B Court Judge Adria Kester. Yes, two seventy-nine, no, one twenty, under vote one eighty-nine, over vote zero. To retain District two-B Court Judge Kurt Stobie. Yes, three hundred and sixty-six, no, eighty-nine. Under vote one thirty-two, over vote one. District two-B Associate Judge Catherine Austin. Yes, two ninety-three, no, one oh, two. Under vote one ninety-three, over vote zero. TB Associate Judge Hans Becker. Sounds like a guy off of Die Hard. Yes, three hundred, no, ninety-eight. Under vote one ninety, over vote zero.
Yep.
District two-B Associate Judge Ashley Bash. Yes, two ninety-four, no, one hundred. Under vote one ninety-three, over vote one. Retain two-B Associate Judge Paul Crawford. Two eighty-nine, yes, no, one ninety, under vote one ninety-nine.
Wait, I got a hundred, no, one hundred.
What did I say?
One ninety.
One ninety. Okay, excuse me. Yes is two eighty-nine, no is one hundred. Under vote is one ninety-nine. Over vote zero.
Yep.
Okay, District two-B Associate Judge Joseph McCarville. Yes, three thirteen, no, ninety-six, under vote one seventy-nine, over vote zero. To be Associate Judge Hunter Thor. Yes, two eighty-seven, no, one oh, three. Under vote one nine eight, over vote zero. The Constitutional Amendment number one. Yes, four twenty-two, no, ninety-nine, under vote sixty-seven, over vote zero. Amendment number two. Yes, four hundred and forty-one, no, seventy-one. Under vote seventy-six, over vote zero. All done.
That constitutional amendment, that one, did you guys read through all that? One was like, we maintain it in general. And it's like, you can't govern, I mean, not general. Um, I just assumed that was already in place.
I would've thought so too, I had no idea.
I, I wanna read through that, I'm like, what?
Was that from when she took over?
Yes, it was.
They didn't have it in place and.
Had a big loophole over it.
Yeah, I was just like, that one threw me away. Well, both of them did, I thought both of them would've been in place. But what? Which it is, I mean.
I mean, that's.
We practiced it with seventeen-year-olds that'll be eighteen on.
Yeah, it's always been that way.
That's what I thought.
But evidently, it wasn't in the Constitution that way, it was just common practice.
So they both, yeah, they both just kinda like.
I think it made it official, presumably.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, Precinct Three.
Okay. Okay.
You're ready?
I'm ready.
Donald Trump, four, oh, eight. Harris, one fourteen. Uh, Oliver, zero. Sheila Cruz, one. Dodger, zero. Kennedy, five. Dallas, zero. Write-ins two, under vote seven, over vote one. Representative. Randy Feenstra. Three hundred and eighty-three. Ryan Milton, one twelve. Write-ins four, under vote thirty-nine, over vote zero.
Yep.
State Senator Dennis Guth. Three hundred and eighty-two. Cynthia, one oh, eight. Write-ins one, under vote forty-seven, over vote zero.
Only one chance.
State Representative. Mark Thompson, three ninety. Kyle Cruz, one oh, eight. Write-in zero, under vote forty, over vote three. County Auditor. That it?
Yep, got it.
Chris Erickson, four sixty-one. Write-ins three, under vote seventy-four, over vote zero.
Yep.
County Sheriff. Dean Kruger, four ninety-five. Write-in seven, under votes thirty-six, over votes zero. Rutland Township.
Okay. Weaver was from Norway, here's Rutland, got it.
Mike Ludwig, seventy-two. Write-ins two.
I got write-ins in one. Oh, you got Steve Gregory. Okay, right, I'm just gonna write, nope, you're gonna, I'm just gonna.
Under vote one, one, four. Over vote zero. Hospital Trustee.
Little Kevin, you got it, okay.
Nice of you, work, Erin.
That's a pretty good cookie.
They're pretty good. Okay, I'm gonna have to go.
Pam Ray, two ninety-eight.
Yep.
Molly, three fourteen. Natalie, three forty.
Yep.
Write-ins two. Under vote six, six, zero, over vote zero. County Soil and Water. Pat Hill, three, six, seven. TC Loving, two, seven, nine. Write-ins ten, under vote four, eighteen, over vote two. Soil and Water fill of vacancy. Reed Burris, four, oh, one, write-ins one. Under vote one thirty-six, over vote zero. Agricultural Extension Council. Ready? Borman, three hundred. Jeffrey Goodell, three sixty-five. Jennifer Lash, two ninety-seven. Jill Sunin, two eighty. Write-ins one, under vote nine, oh, nine, over vote zero.
Yes.
We see Borman.
Agricultural Extension fill of vacancy.
Yep.
Matt Doranber, three, nine, zero. Write-ins one, under vote one, four, seven, over vote zero. Supreme Court Justice.
All right, Mr. David May.
David May, yes. Two, eight, six. No is ninety-nine.
Yep.
Under votes one fifty-three, over vote zero. Court of Appeal Judge Mary Elizabeth Chichelli. Yes, two sixty, no, one twelve, under vote one, six, six, over vote zero. Samuel Lang Holtz. Yes, two, five, five, no, one, one, zero. Under vote one, seven, three, over vote zero. Marion Tabor. Yes, two, seven, one, no, one hundred. Under vote one, six, seven, over vote zero. Eiler Bueller, yes, two, six, three, no, one, zero, four. Under vote one, seven, one, over vote zero. Derek Johnson, yes, two, eight, one, no, eight, seven. Under vote one, six, nine, over vote one. Esther. Yes, two, six, five, no, one, zero, two. Under vote one, seven, one, over vote zero.
Okay.
Stobie. Yes, three eighteen, no, one oh three. Under vote, one one six, over vote, one. Catherine Austin. Yes, two six nine, no, nine two. Under vote, one seven six, over vote, one. Hans Becker. Yes, two six four, no, nine seven. Under vote, one seven six, over vote, one. Ashley Bish. Yes, two five four, no, one zero four. Under vote, one seven eight. Over vote, two. Crawford, yes, two six three, no, nine eight. Under vote, one seven seven, over vote, zero. Joe McCarville. Yes, two seven zero, no, one zero two. Under vote, one six five, over vote, one. Judge Thorpe. Yes, two six two, no, nine eight. Under vote, one seven eight, over vote, zero. Constitutional Amendment, vote for no more than one, yes, is three eight two. No is one oh one. Under vote, fifty-four, over vote, one. Amendment two. Yes, four twenty-two, no, six two. Under vote, five four, over vote, four, zero. That's it.
Going pretty good.
Yeah, it is. That's because we're a good crew, I've got.
I think we've done enough that we're getting enough to the.
You want, take time for cooking?
Yeah, I do.
I'd recommend the lemon, they're pretty darn good.
Yeah, we did taste pretty good.
I like lemon, lemon's my favorite.
Well, for IV, I thought they were.
Oh, yeah, alright.
Very good, yeah.
Well, I'd like to say I made them, but I just bought them at IV, so.
You didn't start working at IV?
No, I feel like I am, I'm a checker there, part-time.
You feel like it, don't you?
You got two people checking and they're backed up to the meat counter.
There, there's part of me that hates it, part of me that likes it, when I go in and get a gallon of milk, I don't have to wait line.
I don't have a problem with that.
I love them.
But you know what bothers me? I'm standing there, I'm checking, and. Then if I buy alcohol or something, then I have to have somebody come over and put it, how old are you? How old do I look? Do I look over nineteen or eighteen, whatever the age is? I'm sixty-four. Oh, then you, what's your birthday? Why the hell aren't you doing this?
I, I think we're ending it when you're. Crazy part, like, Home Depot, they have no checkers.
And they wanna check your receipt when you walk out, to make sure that, what are you gonna look at? You're looking at this to see, oh, it scanned? It didn't scan, I ran it through and it didn't. Here's the story, and, and I got my haircut a couple months back, and the guy was telling me that. The guy was scanning, he bought a big screen TV. He's scanning it, thing wouldn't scan. So the next thing he said, this kid comes walking over and says, can I help you? Said, yeah, not working, so he just grabs the TV and out the door he walks. So he says, I didn't know what the hell to do, so I just followed him, I thought maybe he got it to scan. I get out there and the kid puts some. TV in my pickup and, hello.
Are you kidding me?
That's what he told me, I'm like, are you serious? He said, well, that's what he said.
And I don't know who LO is, but, uh. Some Walmart security.
I don't know what town it was in, but he just said he walked in and it's like. He's scanning, it wouldn't, you know, beeps, wouldn't beep. Kid walks over and says, can I help you? Grabs it and walks out the door.
Yeah, he didn't wanna hassle with trying to make it work, so he's just taking it easily.
Oh, my gosh. I was up there with Chelsea the last time, and they're doing a thing where you, um, it's all gonna be automatic. Oh, they're having AI, they haven't got it in yet, but AI is gonna know when you go underneath this big. They're gonna know whether you scanned everything or not.
Well, but the ironic thing is.
Then why don't they just scan it that way the first time?
You set it on the counter, it knows the weight of that thing, it knows if it, it's like, please put in bagging area, it's like, shut up, I'm trying to get it over there, put it in the new bag. Well.
Pretty soon you walk out and you also get an alert and it's like, hey, you got it too much. We just scanned you.
You need to go to the doctor.
I'm, I didn't think about that, though, I bet, like, if somebody tries to stick something in their pocket or something, I bet you it'll show up.
They always got that RF tag on, or they call it.
Well, they already got it where you can scan every night and with your phone and just walk out the door.
Yeah, you just, when you go through the store, you just, with your phone.
Alright.
Alright.
Second round?
Second round.
Two, this is Precinct Four.
Alright.
I have, uh, Trump. Um, Precinct Four is two, three, four. Harris, five oh, Oliver, one. Nicole Chan. I got four, right ends, one, under, zero, over, zero. I have. Representative, uh, Randy Feenstra. I have two, two, five, Milton, forty-six, right end, zero, under nineteen, over, zero. Uh, District Twenty-eight, I got Goo. Two, one, four, Opedal, forty-eight. Uh, ra- under is twenty-eight, over is zero.
Oops, yep, sorry, let's look at the wrong one.
I have District Four, uh, Five, Six, Mark Thompson, two, one, three. Uh, Cruz, fifty. Right in zero, under is twenty-seven, over is zero. Board of Supervisors, District Four. Mike Carpenter's.
Hey, I'm really gotta get there. Hey, I'm there now.
Four, eight. Right ends, five, under. Thirty-seven, over is zero.
Say that one again, I.
I got Mike Carpenter, two, four, eight.
I got the wrong one.
Right ends, five, under, thirty-seven, and over is zero.
Sorry, Mike, I got the wrong one. Like, wait a minute.
I have, uh, County Auditor. Trish Erickson, two, five, five. Right in zero, under, three, five, over, zero. Sheriff. I have Kruger, two, seven, seven. Right in zero, under is thirteen, over is zero. We have Avery Trustee. Paul Nielsen, six, six. Right ends, one, under seventy-nine, over, zero. I have Waucusta, uh, trustee.
Here we go, okay.
I have Jess Walter, forty-one. Right ends, five, under is forty-eight, over is zero.
Okay.
Now we go to Weaver. Randy Davis, forty-two, right ends, three. Under forty-seven, over, zero. Humble Hospital Trustees. I have Pam Ray, one, six, zero, Molly is one, seven, six. Uh, Natalie Werglen is one, eight, zero, right ends, zero, under. Three, five, four, over, zero. I have County Water and Soil Commissioner. Pat Hill, two, zero, three, TC Loving, one, five, seven, right in zero. Under two, two, zero, over, zero. County Water and Soil. I have Reed Burris, two, one, eight, right in zero, under is seven, two, over, zero. I have, uh, Extension. Jenna Borman, one, five, nine, Jeff Goodell, one, eight, five. Jennifer Lash, one, seven, one, Jill Sonnen, one, four, five, right ends, one. Under four, nine, nine, over, zero. Agricultural Extension. Matthew Dormer. Two, ones, nine, right ends, zero, under is seven, one, over, zero.
He just lost LO.
He got bored.
Must have.
I have Supreme Court Justices. I have David May, one, six, eight, is yes, no is forty-three, under is seven, nine, over is zero. Uh, Mary Elizabeth, that. You know, yes is one, three, nine, no is fifty-eight, under ninety-three, over, zero. Samuel Langholtz, one, three, six, is yes, no is fifty-six, under. Is ninety-eight, over is zero. Appeals Court, Mary Tabor, yes, one, three, seven, no, fifty-six. Under ninety-six, over, zero. Bueller is yes, one, four, zero, no, forty-seven. Under one, oh, three, over, zero. Derek Johnson, yes, one, four, eight. No, forty-nine, under ninety-three, over, zero. Kestner. Yes, one, three, two, no is fifty-seven, under is one, oh, one. Then, over, zero. Stoby, yes, one, seven, four, no is forty-nine, under sixty-seven, over, zero. Austin is yes, one, four, seven, no is four, seven, under is ninety-six, over is zero. Uh, Becker. Yes, one, four, four, no, five, oh, under ninety-six, over, zero. Bish. Yes, one, four, eight, no, forty-six, under is ninety-six, zero, for over. Crawford is yes, one, four, five, no, fifty-one, under is ninety-four, over is zero. McCarville is one, five, four, no is fifty, or excuse me, forty-five. Under is ninety-one, zero, for over. Um, Thorpe is one, four, three, no, yeah, is five, zero. Under is ninety-seven, over is zero. Amendment one, yes, two, sixteen, no is thirty-one, under is forty-three, over is zero. Amendment two, yes, is two, two, three, over, or excuse me, is no is twenty. Under is four, seven, over is zero. That is the end. Another cookie? Didn't know that you had a little cough, did you? You need a little bourbon.
Precinct Number Five. Okay, from. Three hundred and twenty-one. Harris, fifty-seven. Oliver, three. Cruz. Zero. Cholinsky or whatever it is, zero. Kennedy, four. And, Shiva, Raya, Dray, or whatever it is, zero. Right end, zero, under votes, five, over vote, zero. Representative District Four, Feenstra, three, eleven, Milton, fifty-six, right in zero. Under twenty-three, over, zero. District Twenty-eight. Goo, two ninety-seven, Opedal, fifty-six. Right in zero, under vote, thirty-seven, over vote, zero. District Fifty-six, Thompson, two ninety-nine. Gross, sixty, right ends, zero, under vote, thirty-one, over vote, zero. Board of Supervisors, District Four, Carpenter. Three hundred and twenty-three, right ends, eighteen, under vote, forty-nine, over vote, zero. County Auditor. Erickson. Three thirty-two, right ends, two, under vote, fifty-six, over vote, zero. County Sheriff. Kruger, three fifty-two, right ends, seven, under vote, thirty-one, over vote, zero. Elena Township Trustee. No candidates, we got eight right ends. Under vote, forty-six.
Oh, wait, Steve also moved, okay, never mind, I keep. That messes me up.
Yeah, 'cause he doesn't know who they are.
Okay, so those two, okay, so there's the eight, okay, under vote, forty-six.
Under co- under vote, forty-six, over vote, zero. Elena Township. Same thing, no candidates, right ends, four, under vote, one, oh, four. Over vote, zero.
Okay, these are all looked at, right in.
Let me do that again.
Okay, you said four, right?
Four right ends, hundred and four, under vote, zero, over vote.
Okay, so I got, I got that, okay.
Humboldt Trustee. Humboldt Township Trustee. Nick Collins, forty-eight. Tyler McGol.
Wait, 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 sorry, Humboldt.
Humboldt.
Okay, Nick Collins, forty-eight, gotcha, okay.
Tyler, fifty, right ends, zero, under vote, thirty-two, over vote, zero.
Okay, got it.
Okay, we're gonna go to Rutland Township.
Rutland, okay.
Mike Ludwig, Ludwig, sixty, excuse me, six. Right in zero, under vote, fourteen, over vote, zero. Vernon Township Trustee. William Nelson, twenty, right in six, under vote, thirty, over vote, zero. Okay, Humboldt County Hospital Trustee. Ray, two fourteen. Brandon, two eighteen, Werglen, two thirty-seven, right in zero, under vote, four, ninety. Brandon, two-eighteen, Werglen, two-thirty-seven, write-in zero, under vote four-ninety-eight, over vote three. Conservation District. Pat Hill, two-hundred-and-seventy, T.C. Loving, one-eighty-two, write-in zero, under vote three-twenty-eight, over vote zero. Conservation District, the Phila Vacancy. Reed Burris, two-ninety, write-ins zero, under vote one-hundred, over vote zero. County Agricultural Extension Council. Borman, two-forty-three, Goodell, two-twenty-eight, Lash, one-ninety-five, Soen, one-eighty-eight, write-ins one. Under vote seven-oh-five, over vote zero. Council Extension to Philly Vacancy, Matt Dormbeer, three-oh-two, write-ins two. Under vote eighty-six, over vote zero. Supreme Court Justice, David May.
Mister May, alright.
Yes, two-ten, no, sixty-six, under vote one-fourteen, over vote zero. Then we have Appeals Court, Elizabeth Chichilli. Yes, one-seventy-three, no, eighty-seven, under vote one-thirty, over vote zero. Then we have Appeals Judge, Langholtz, yes, one-sixty-eight, no, eighty-four, under vote one-thirty-eight, over vote zero. Now we retain Court of Appeals Judge, Tabor. Yes, one-sixty-seven, no, eighty-seven, under vote one-thirty-six, over vote zero. Appeals Judge, Buller. Yes, one-seventy-three, no, seventy-eight, under vote one-thirty-nine, over vote zero. Retained District to Report Judge Derek Johnson. Yes, one-seventy-nine, no, seventy-five, under vote one-thirty-six, over vote zero. District Judge, Kester. Yes, one-sixty-nine, no, eighty-three, under vote one-thirty-eight, over vote zero. District Court Judge Stobie. Yes, two-ten, no, eighty-one, under vote ninety-nine, over vote zero. Associate Judge Catherine Austin. Yes, one-seventy-five, no, seventy-eight, under vote one-thirty-seven, over vote zero. Associate Judge Hans Becker. Yes, one-seventy-two, no, seventy-eight, under vote one-forty, over vote zero. Associate Judge Ashley Bish, yes, one-seventy-five, no, seventy-eight, under vote one-thirty-six, over vote one.
Okay.
Okay, Associate Judge Paul Crawford, yes, one-sixty-nine, no, eighty-one, under vote one-forty, over vote zero. Associate Judge. McCarville, one-seventy-three, yes, no, eighty-three, under vote one-thirty-four, over vote zero. Associate Judge Thorpe, yes, one-sixty-nine, no, eighty, under vote one-forty-one, over vote zero. Constitutional Amendment Number One, yes, two-fifty-nine, no, eighty-six, under vote forty-five, over vote zero.
Okay.
Constitutional Amendment Number Two. Yes, two-ninety-one, no, forty-six, under vote fifty-three, over vote zero.
Yes.
At my house, the grandkids, they'll finger them in this, I touched that one.
Oh.
I don't care.
I can't lift them.
I don't care.
I licked that one. Yeah, I'm dressed. Sorry, I'm still hot.
It's raining now.
Mm-hmm.
I did too, isn't that crazy?
I thought maybe suckers were twelve feet underground by now.
I sure know. Think it's warm. Alright, I'm ready.
Are you sure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This would be precinct, set six. President Donald Trump, four-seventy. Harris, one-oh-six. Oliver, two. De La Cruz, zero. Stoddard, zero. Robert Kennedy, five. Selba, how do I pronounce that, Christopher Ellis, zero, write-in zero, under vote six, over vote zero. Representative. Feenstra, four-fifty-one. Milton, one-oh-seven. Write-ins three. Under vote twenty-eight, over vote zero.
Okay.
Senator Guth, four-thirty-one. Opadoll, one-one-six. Write-ins three, under vote thirty-nine, over vote zero. Representative Thompson, four-four-eight. Cruz, one-one-four, write-ins one, under vote two-six, over vote zero. Supervisor.
Supervisor there, District Six. Our District Five, three-three-six, I'm sorry.
Get a little boring, you have to watch.
You do, yeah.
Okay. Rasmussen, five-oh-six, write-ins fourteen. Under vote six-nine, over vote zero. Auditor.
What?
Erickson, five-one-five, write-ins four, under vote seventy, over vote zero.
Sir.
Sheriff. Bruger, five-four-eight. Write-in six, under vote three-five, over vote zero. Bieber Township Trustees.
Two-three Bieber, okay.
Peterson, eleven. Tarkelson, ten, write-in zero, under vote nine, over vote zero.
Yep.
Row Township.
Okay.
Years, forty-seven. Hughes, forty-eight. Write-ins one, under vote forty, over vote zero. Lake Township.
Good.
Okay, Nervig, fifty. Write-ins five, under vote seven, over vote zero. The Phila Vacancy, Lake Township. Dennis Rasmussen, five-four, write-ins two, under vote six, over vote zero. Norway Township.
Township's in that one. Norway, okay.
Clayton Hanson, thirty-six. Mark Holton, two-five. Write-in zero, under vote three-seven, over vote zero.
Okay.
Vernon Township.
Okay.
Nielsen, three, write-in zero, under vote five, over vote zero. County Hospitals.
Okay.
Hospital.
Uh-huh.
Ray, three-three-six. Molly, three-five-seven. Natalie, three-eight-zero. Write-ins five. Under vote six-eight-nine, over vote zero. Soil and Water Conservation District.
Okay.
Hill, four-one-seven. Loving, three-one-twelve, three-one-two.
I know you.
I can see. Write-ins eight, under vote four-four-one, over vote zero. Uh, Soil and Water Conservation, Phila Vacancy, Reed Burris, four-four-four. Write-in six, under vote one-three-nine, over vote zero.
Okay.
Agriculture Extension. Borman, three-two-seven. Goodell, three-six-nine. Lash, three-two-eight. Soenen, three-zero-zero. Write-in seven, under vote one-zero-two-five, over vote zero. The Phila Vacancy, Ag Extensions. Dunberg. Four-five-one, write-in seven, under vote one-three-one, over vote zero. Okay, now to the judges.
Mister Rick May, not Ray, May, God, they all start, we're all.
He's back.
Okay. David May, yes, three-two-nine, no, one-oh-six, under vote one-five-four, over vote zero. Chichilli, yes, two-nine-four, no, one-one-eight, under vote one-seven-seven, over vote zero.
Well, I hear that and then I like it.
Langholt, yes, two-nine-six, no, one-one-three, under vote one-eight-oh, over vote zero. Tabor. Yes, two-seven-nine, no, one-two-nine. Under vote one-eight-one, over vote zero. Bueller. Yes, two-nine-five, no, one-one-three, under vote one-eight-one, over vote zero. Johnson. Yes, three-oh-nine. No, one-oh-one. Under vote one-seven-nine, over vote zero. Kestner. Yes, two-eight-five, no, one-one-four, under vote one-nine-zero, over vote zero. Stobie. Yes, three-four-five, no, one-zero-four, under vote one-four-zero, over vote zero. Austin. Yes, two-eight-six, no, one-one-one, under vote one-nine-two, over vote zero. Becker, yes, two-nine-three, no, one-oh-nine, under vote one-eight-seven, over vote zero. Bish. Yes, two-nine-three, no, one-zero-five, under vote one-nine-one, over vote zero. Crawford. Yes, two-eight-four, no, one-one-four, under vote one-nine-one, over vote zero. McCarville, yes, three-one-four, no, one-oh-two, under vote one-seven-three, over vote zero. Thorpe. Yes, two-nine-one, no, one-oh-seven, under vote one-nine-one, over vote zero. Constitutional Amendment One, yes, four-one-eight, no, nine-one, under vote eight-zero, over vote zero. Uh, Number Two, yes, four-nine, four-three-nine, no, six-four, under vote eight-six, over vote zero. That's it.
One more.
Oh.
Yeah, you want me to give you the easy button or the hard button? Okay, let's do easy. Okay, so the total at the bottom where it says absentee on each race. If they match, let's do that.
Oh, I see, okay, yep, yep, yep.
So who wants to, do you want me to read them, or?
Well, if you read them, we can, we all three can check them. Or all four of us, I guess, Dave.
I'm still playing.
He's still wrapping his, um.
Dates.
Okay, for the absentee totals. At the bottom for Presidential, Donald Trump, one-four-two-four, Harris, six-thirty-one. Oliver, six. De La Cruz, two, Staden, one. Kennedy, nine. And zero, and then write-in two, under vote twenty-five, over vote four. And then U.S. Representative District Four, Randy Feenstra, one-three-nine-two. Um, Melton is five-fifty-seven, write-in three, under vote one-forty-nine, over vote three.
Looking good.
Yeah, State Senator District Twenty-eight, Dennis Guth is one-three-one-two. Um, Opadoll Passion is five-fifty-nine, write-in zero, under vote two-thirty-one, over vote two. And then State Representative Fifty-six. Mark Thompson, one-three-five-seven. Cruz, five-five-one. Cruz, five five one, right in two. Under vote one ninety-three, over vote one.
He had almost many write-ins, or not write-ins, but.
Yeah.
Election Day is, is absentee, isn't it crazy?
Yeah. Okay, County Board of Supervisors.
Oops, oops, oops.
District Four. Excuse me.
Okay.
I'm there.
That's where you got the change.
Page twenty-three. Oh, yeah, you gotta flip them off on these.
Forty-three.
Mike Carpenter, one ninety-nine. Right in vote eleven. Under vote sixty-three, over vote zero. Board of Supervisors, District Five. Bob Rassmussen, three seventy-two, right in five, under eighty-two, over zero.
Alright.
County Auditor Erickson, one six nine eight. Right in ten. Under three ninety-six, over zero. County Sheriff Kruger. One eight four zero, right in two five, under two thirty-seven, over two. And then Avery Township Trustee.
Alright.
Is Paul Nielsen, seventeen. Right in three. Under vote.
It's that Mark Dickey, so you gotta put, so I'm just writing right in.
I have the right in plus the second because.
Gotcha.
As long as you guys know.
We're, yeah, right in three, under vote twenty-two, over vote zero.
Yep.
And then Beaver Township Trustee.
Rick Peterson, excuse me, fifty-seven.
Dave Torkelson, sixty, right in one, under vote sixty-four. And over vote zero.
Okay.
Corinth Trustee. Doug Bacon, eighty-three, right in one. Under vote one thirty, over vote zero. And Delaina Township is right in zero. Under vote thirty-five, over vote zero. Delaina to fill a vacancy is right in two, under vote sixty-eight.
Hang on a minute, hang on a minute.
I got one.
Oh, Steve Tool, Tool. I gotta, I didn't have him right in, he was a, oh, so he was the absentee right in, gotcha, okay. Alright, so move.
And then over vote zero. And then Grove Township Trustee.
Excuse me, did you say under vote was sixty?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I was still writing right in.
Sorry.
You're good.
Grove Trustee, John Garris, seventy-seven. Robert Hughes, eighty-four, right in zero, over vote seventy-nine. Under vote seventy-nine, sorry, over vote zero. Humboldt Township Trustee, Nick Collins, eighteen. Tyler McCullough, seventeen, right in zero, under eleven, over zero. Lake Trustee. Um, Rick Nervig, twenty-five. And right in zero, under four, over zero. Lake Trustee to fill a vacancy, Dennis Rassmussen, twenty-six. Right in zero, under vote three, over vote zero. Norway Trustee, Clay Hanson, fifty-one. Mark Holton, fifty-three, right in one, under vote twenty-one, over vote zero. Rutland Trustee, Mike Ludwig, fifty-eight. Right in one, under vote ninety-seven, over vote zero. Vernon Trustee, William Nelson, eighteen. Right in seven. Under vote twenty-one, over vote zero. Wakuta, Wakusta Trustee. Jess Welter, twenty-one. Right in four, under vote twenty-seven, over vote zero. Weaver Trustee, Randy Davis, twenty-three, right ends four. Under vote forty-one, over vote zero. And then Humboldt County Trust, Humboldt County Hospital Trustee.
Thirty-three.
When you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, Pam Ray. One thousand one ninety-two. Varan Coon. Is twelve nineteen. Werglin, twelve ninety-four, right in twelve. Under vote twenty-five ninety-two, over vote three. Soil and Water.
Matt, you gotta go to forty-two.
Is Pat Hill. Thirteen seventy-nine. TC Loving, ten ninety-seven, right in seventeen. Under vote seventeen thirteen, over vote two. Soil and Water to fill a vacancy, Reed Burris, thirteen fifty-seven. Right in fifteen, under vote seven thirty-two, over votes zero. Ag Extension Council. Uh, Jenna Borman, eleven thirty-five. Jeffrey Goodell, twelve fifty-one, Jennifer Lash, eleven twenty-seven. Jill Sunin is ten sixty-three, right in thirteen. Under vote thirty-eight zero three, over vote twenty-four.
There's four people that get over a thousand votes.
I know, that's pretty good.
Um, County Extension to fill a vacancy, Matthew Dornbeer, thirteen sixteen. Right in seven, under vote seven eight eighty-one, over vote zero. And then to the judges.
May, Mister May, back on seven.
Yes, is eight forty-two, no, three ninety-two. Under vote eight sixty-eight, over vote two. Mary Elizabeth Chichili, yes, eight oh nine, no, three thirty-five. Under vote nine fifty-nine, over vote one. Samuel Langholz is yes, seven forty-two, no, three sixty-two. Under vote nine nine nine, over vote one. Mary Ellen Tabor is yes, seven seven seven, no, three three seven. Under vote nine eight nine, over vote one. Tyler Bueller is yes, seven sixty-eight, no, three twenty-eight. Under vote one thousand and seven, over vote one. Uh, Derek Johnson, yes, eight thirty, no, three twelve. Under vote nine sixty-one, over vote one. Adrienne Kester, yes, seven eighty-one, no, three twelve. Under vote ten ten, over vote one. John Kirk Stobie, yes, one thousand one oh two. No, three forty-four. Under vote six fifty-eight, over vote zero. And Catherine Austin, yes, seven eighty-eight. Two ninety-five for no. Under vote ten nineteen, over vote two. Hans Becker, yes, seven eighty-one, no, three oh three. Under vote ten nineteen, over vote one. Ashley Beish is yes, seven ninety-eight, no, two seventy-nine. Under vote is ten twenty-three, over vote is four. Paul Crawford, yes, seven thirty-six, no, three twenty-two. Under vote ten forty-four, over vote two. Joseph McCarville, yes, eight twenty-six, no, three twelve. Under vote nine fifty-nine, over vote seventy, or seven, sorry. Yeah, we're carried away. Hunter Thorpe, seven seventy.
There's your seventy.
Yeah. No, two ninety-seven, under vote ten thirty-six, over vote one. Constitutional Amendment One. Yes, fourteen fifty-eight, no, three thirty-six. Under vote three ten, over vote zero. Constitutional Amendment Number Two. Yes, fifteen oh four.